Thank you everyone for making it here tonight. Hi Tamara. So, oh, I forgot to bring my agenda.
Guess what?
Thank you, because I had it all printed out in big bold.
So you could read it.
And if I could read it, thank you, wow. I got a bounty.
I got a purple.
Okay, so I guess we're, oh, wait a second. Six o'clock, so are there any agenda amendments?
Do we have listed a potential for an executive session?
Oh, let's do that, because we do have a potential executive session. Where, yeah.
Premature public knowledge.
Premature public knowledge. I think we might need a legislative update, and I have a question to ask our attorneys.
And I have another executive session issue too.
Yeah, so, okay, so when do we do that? At the end?
Yeah, we have a finding that we have something, for example, I have legal advice to share with the board around the amendment committee that could, premature public knowledge could put the board at disadvantage.
Okay, thank you.
And so, when we get into Act 46, you could certainly say, "What's that, finding for executive session?"
Then let's do it. I can't thi-- does anyone have any other amendments besides ones that deal with our Act 46? Okay, great. Let's see, approval of December 19th.
Good luck there.
Great pleasure.
That's it.
Of December 19th and January 10th, board meeting minutes. Those were great, by the way.
Yes, they were.
Very thorough, all the minutes, yeah.
So I have a question on the, not the, the 10th was the short one, right?
Right.
The other minutes, I know I arrived late, but the first two, I think, or three votes said 3-0. So that motive meant someone else wasn't voting for the first couple.
Was it Dawn not here then?
We couldn't get him on the phone quite yet.
Oh, okay. Did the minutes reflect that? Because I, it's just an anomaly.
No, I didn't, I--
Yeah, I don't know if it should be on there. It probably should, so, because like, when I was reading through them, I was like, "Why is it 3-0, we're all there?" And then I saw where I arrived late, so that made sense.
We were just trying to get hold of him to be the phone.
Yeah, so you might want us to put the time that Dawn connected.
Joined the meeting.
Because the vote tally's then changed.
Good point, thank you.
Just like when I arrived.
Do we know what time it was?
That was the only thing.
Is this December 19th? Time we called in?
I don't know exactly what time.
Do you remember, Dawn? You can maybe look at your phone, or do we, we don't have that precise.
I probably got on in the first five minutes or so. I had trouble connecting, I called you, you called me back.
It would've been just when the vote changed to 5-0.
And you know, I think it may very well be, Dawn was here and voting for these, so I think that--
I voted on the check warrants.
He did. So I think it's really that probably we couldn't, couldn't hear--
I don't remember doing the minutes.
Because I was right next to the phone.
I think probably the minutes, 3-0, were correct.
Okay, that's it.
So then we'll switch it to 4-0 for check warrants on--
Beautiful.
Okay, thank you for catching that.
Yeah.
Catch Toby.
And then, did you, oh, you had my show?
Um, I just need a little bit more clarification on the motion to move there. A motion was raised by Megan Conley to move approximately $20,000 into the playground fund. Can we say, approximately $20,000 from the playground capital reserve fund--
Yeah.
--to the Swanton Community Playground Fund, right, Community Playground Fund, please.
Swan Community Playground Fund.
What do I have on that? I'm hard to figure out. I was like, can we clarify? And I'm like--
Oh, look at the--
If you can give them.
Right down.
Right down.
So can I have a motion to accept the minutes?
I will make a motion to accept both those minutes for January 10th and January 16th, I think, as--
No, December 19th and January 10th.
December 19th and January 10th with the amendments discussed.
I'll second.
Megan seconded?
It's way down in the bottom.
Any discussion? Further discussion, I should say? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Nay? No, I'm not saying nay, I'm just asking. Okay, so the motion passed unanimously. Great, thank you. And now we're on our fiscal and HR report, and we have some warrants that need action tonight.
We have the warrants, Dawn has them right now, actually. The warrants for the month of December.
All right, I will make a motion to approve the warrants for the month of December 2018, and the amount is $767,491.28.
Great.
I'll second that motion.
Beautiful. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, the motion passed unanimously. Any other warrants? Up to date. Okay, so, and now we're at the point where we're going to have just a, another discussion about the budget draft. I know we spent a lot of time in December, but we just thought it'd be fortuitous or prudent to check in again now. Thank you, both of you, for going over this and looking at all this again.
And again, we weren't going to be doing it, but because the organizational meeting was kicked out another month, this month's board meeting is another opportunity for people to just make sure that they're going to move forward to the transition board of budgets that they feel comfortable with.
Nicely said.
The only items for additions since the last draft were a few things that Dina had chatted with me about, under instructional programs, athletic program supplies, which is 61001, there's an increase of $2,500. I don't know if you want to speak to it, Dina?
That was just basically, we had talked about replacing uniforms, and the board graciously said that in this year's budget, go ahead and do that. We're not anticipating that it will be, because of some other things, and I don't want to start spending that now, in case. So we took the liberty of adding that next year, and that would be, those would be ordered pretty soon, right after July 1, especially in the area of soccer. We talked last time about how long, how old those uniforms are, and that we really need to replace them, so that's why we added that there.
Great.
And then, page three, health services, for the equipment line, the 730 line, there's an increase of $2,000 for additional screener equipment.
Right, we had talked last time too. Once again, the board said, basically through our health office, there was a need of upgrading those two machines, so we decided to go forward in purchasing both of them, so that they would be updated and ready to go for our students.
All right, that's great.
And then the only other thing that we did, and we, on page six, under plant operations, where you have your capital project repair and maintenance line, and you also have your typical repair and maintenance line in the 430 section, so plant operation and maintenance where the 430 and 43003 are.
Okay.
I believe at the last meeting, we had increased $20,000 to the capital line.
Right.
And we chose to split that apart, $10,000 repair and maintenance, and $10,000 in capital project repair and maintenance.
Oh.
Funds can still be utilized differently, but it's like--
It makes the most sense.
Yeah, it makes the most sense, right.
Just to highlight, if I could, Laura, highlight, if you remember, $20,000 of that was put in for our lighting project. We were going to use the $29,000 out of the current capital reserve, and then the $20,000 from this year's, this coming budget, to complete that project, hopefully this summer, that was the original plan. Jason, with the $29,000, was going to start lining things up, get bids, well, not get bid, not get bids, but to work with that company, but to use the funds that are now available to order product. And then, after July 1, to have these funds secured, to make sure that we can get that done in a timely fashion.
Beautiful.
Laura, can I ask what the question was?
Above.
On 430?
It's just, I know there's other items under that. It's a reminder for me that I probably need to pull a detail in and add some of our notes. Yeah, I should probably have a section that's my notes versus your notes.
Dina, just relatedly on the uniforms, I don't, I don't want to get too granular here, but if you think about it, if you, reversible, you can get soccer reversible as well. I know that basketball's kind of always been reversible.
Yeah, but soccer, we'll definitely look into that, because there's a lot of lore around.
Right. We end up having to wear pennies at most games, so.
Yeah, because I think all three of our elementary schools are--
Yes.
--one shade or another. Thank you for that, Toby, that's good.
If we should arrive in May, things moving forward, and we're on the positive side of the ledger, I'd like to revisit the purchase of the uniforms.
This year, okay. That is totally fine, I appreciate that. We are moving forward with the board's, like I said, support again. We have the money in there for our FMP kits, as we had presented before, so Chrissy and Deb Boucher are in the process of putting that order together, and that will be good, it will be in alignment with the rest of the schools too, and being able to do that, so.
And I did bring you a financial report, it had been a while, and it's not on the agenda, but I wasn't planning on talking too much about it, but I did hand out a financial report, and as you can see, current year, we're projecting over $200,000 more car yields, currently after revenues have been considered, so there is a good possibility that there are 80 some funds available to do some of those things.
We don't want to bring it--
Sorry Laura.
No, I--
Sorry, but thank you. You'll have to watch that close your eyes.
To be prudent.
This is good.
Yes, thank you, thank you. So that was really helpful. I think it is really important, since we, you know, we thought we wouldn't have this month, and now we have more time, so.
Right.
Excellent. But the, just for purpose of the camera, the budget process will be different this year, in terms of, typically we'd be warning, you know, we'd approve it, and then we'd warn it, but because of the whole merger stipulations from the state, there will be no warning of a school budget, there will be no vote on a school budget at this town meeting day.
On town meeting. I spoke with the messenger today, because there is a lot of confusion, and the messenger was asking, you know, they were asking, "Are you having local budgets?" And I said, "There was never a timeline, since a merger was imposed upon us, where we would be able to have a budget for a town meeting." And now it will be delayed even more, because only the elected new board, not the appointed, but the elected new board, has the authority to warn a new district budget. So, because we have a delay in our ability to organize, and that, that will have a ripple effect, that will result in a budget, not a special, obviously a special meeting, to pass a budget, I would say the end of April at the earliest for budget. And of course, that's concerning to everybody, but we will work diligently to make sure that we have good information out to the community and a responsible budget, I know. Laura and I discuss this a lot as we're preparing town reports. Obviously, I wrote a letter that addresses Act 46 in part, but then we decided that where voters are looking for article, school-related articles, we would want to have a little letter, town by town, about, because sometimes we'll have some school articles, and Swanton, for example, will not have any. And we purposely didn't move forward with having local school board elections, when we were expecting to have new district school board elections at the same time, that would have been very confusing, and now we're in a position where it's, there are no elections at all in there. So we put a little explanation for folks to be able to understand the purpose there, and that they can expect a special election for board members, and potentially articles of agreement at the same time.
So on this board, who would be up for election?
If it was continuing, I'm done in my tell me you.
Yeah, okay, but you'd be up for reelection, you'd be right. So there'll be nothing on the board?
Nothing.
So they would just continue?
We can, that, this board will appoint for vacancies after that.
Because when I was out getting a couple petitions for a new school, but one not even related to school business, somebody asked about MVU, and I said, "Well, I'm up for MVU, but it's my understanding that they're not going to be invalided." And this person said, "Well, what if somebody did a write-in? Could they get elected to a board?"
But there's no--
But there's, there's no option.
There's no option.
To see if they were, if there was, if it was there, and nobody submitted a petition, then anybody could do a write-in campaign, but--
But there's no article for it.
So there's no article, okay, that's good.
I suppose if you were in Hungate or Franklin, when it came to other business, somebody could nominate one of the existing board members to extend their--
So it won't be there, which will be good, that'll reduce a little bit of the confusion.
Yeah.
Yes, so my hope is that the letter that we put in there, should go right before where the warnings for articles are, will help.
To explain--
But if you hear anything, please let folks contact me, send me an email, I'm happy to try and clarify things for folks, because it's pretty confusing, and there's a lot of confusing information out there.
I did have a question about that, and I know that you're putting out a, normally the school board puts a letter in the town report. Will we not be doing that this year, or will we be doing that this year?
We still do, because we have an obligation to report on last year.
Okay.
So that's really what our town reports--
Is that what this is?
That's great, yeah.
That's a principal.
Dina will do that.
Okay.
And you'll do that.
Then we have, I did one last year, so we'll do it.
Oh, okay.
But it'll be from all of us, so I got to get your updates, and make sure you're okay with it.
So that would have to be pretty quick.
Another week or so, we have to have a--
Okay.
Different town clerks have different deadlines.
Glad to do it.
We've been working on it.
If you all have anything you want me to add, or any suggestions--
We could write it to my attorney.
--about the board to be saying, please send me your thoughts. Did you guys hear that, John and Toby?
Yes.
If you guys have any thoughts, please send them, great, thank you.
And I just have a quick question. So the transitional board is putting together the budget to hand off to the new board.
Correct.
And, okay, I had it in my head that the transitional board was going to be warning, but that's good to clarify.
They can warn the election of the new board members, and they can warn articles of agreement.
Okay.
The elected board will need to warn the budget.
Okay, got it. Wow, clear as mud.
Exactly. All this stuff. Okay, so thank you for all that, everyone. So, on a cheerier note, we get to go to the principals' report.
We had the, just starting with the enrollment, that was pretty. We lost two kids, but that was a transition of kids coming in and out, so the numbers have stayed, actually, we gained two kids, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
So those numbers, I mean, they continue to grow, people keep coming. We, Justine, do you mind mentioning just a little bit of the, we did our spotlight on data on our PBIS universal, and she does an outstanding job on our PBIS newsletter, so everyone's got a copy of that. You want to say anything, just about a--
Yeah, really, the newsletter was something that we started last year, to just kind of increase our communication with families, especially in regards to our PBIS work. So we aim to send out three kind of outreach newsletters a year. This is one, this was from the beginning of this year, it's just a sample of one that went home, we just try to keep it a page or two, but the second page does talk about, which you already knew, the merit award that we got at the beginning of the year, but it also highlights our major referral data for September, and just kind of the continued decline and the reduction of numbers for those, for our kids.
Can I ask you a question about that, Justine? I saw that spotlight on data, and it had word of click or control, no click, it wouldn't give me permission to do so.
Okay.
To open it up?
To open it up? Let me, I can just--
I don't know if everybody had that issue.
I don't know if she can do it on here, but I'll just, I'll just do that.
I'll just open it, it seems to work.
And open for you.
Maybe because I'm part of the Google domain, yeah.
You're in, you're in Franklin Northwest, I think.
Oh, that might be why, so I can check on that.
If it gave, did it give you an option to ask for access?
Oh.
Maybe it didn't, I didn't read it, I was just, oh, I'm not allowed.
Because usually--
Usually it does, but--
And then she--
Yeah, the guy asks for access.
Okay. I don't know, I haven't received a request for access, but I can reshare it. But just, the school year 15, 16, we had 386 major referrals, those are kind of more significant behaviors that might result in a student going down to a planning room. We have reduced that number over the years to 180.
That's great.
For the month of September, for 18, 19, so, and, and that was from 386, just a few years ago, in the month's time. So we've worked really hard at that data, we're proud of it. So that was just kind of a spotlight that we put out for our families, so that they know our efforts and our initiatives are working, and that's why we're sticking with it.
The other thing, and like I said, this is a rather short one, because it was, you know, a short time since we've been back, since our last meeting. We had our first ski trip for grade five yesterday, and things went very well. We are always cognizant and worried about the temperature, especially when it's a kid whose first time, you know, when it's really, really cold, they might not want to go back, but things went very, very well. We have two more days, and that's a big shout-out to Greg Carpenter and to Chrissy Longway for all of the organization with that. So that's a, it's a very successful program. Teachers are still working, our big focus right now is our PLCs, and continuing that work. We did, I have to, a shout-out to Channel 15, again, they were here the other day to do a final taping session of all of those little snippets that we use, that I may adjust the timeline on Facebook, when they're, when it's a good time to do it, we share that information just about the things happening here. They're outstanding work with, they really are. There was like, a big block of about an hour, and Katie Foster, right, was here, and she just had a cup of coffee in my office, and just kind of chilled for a little bit, so this is her old stomping grounds, but it's just, that, that's, it's outstanding what they do, and the professionalism in these little snippets is just so appreciated, so that's a big, big shout-out there.
I want to chime in, my, so my son was in one of the classes, and he was over the moon ecstatic about the fact that the TV was coming. "I'm going to be famous." And I was like--
Autographs.
Sure. So like, I know that the kids were super, super excited about it, too, so.
Yeah, it's a big deal.
Yeah.
It was like Dave. Some of our teachers are shy, but the kids are like--
The teachers are high.
So I'm glad, it's good, so we'll look for that as we go. And then just a brief facilities update, very, I believe, outstanding concert last week, I mean, Toby can probably vouch for that. Gianna Messier, our instrumental music teacher, and Amy Riker do a phenomenal job, there were 99 kids participating in strings, a band. The chorus was unbelievable, the song choice that she picked, and it just, you know, and once again, Channel 15 was here to tape that, and instead of putting the whole thing on, I asked if we could have just little sections to be able to share in small snippets, because sometimes that's easier for people to digest. So they said that we'd look into that, but, so that wasn't in our report, but I, I just thought it was a highlight. We are also in the process right now of completing mid-year paraevaluations, and that's a very time-consuming thing, but it's something that we really take seriously. We have in-service scheduled for Monday. Joelle Van Lent will be here, continuing her work on being, coming to trauma-informed school and resiliency. So it's a pretty full day for teachers, we've got a lot planned, and our para staff too, they'll be here, so. Along with the, with our principals' report, two things, and I might ask Laura for a little bit of help with this, but working with Jason and Chrissy, we have received funds for a new milk cooler. However, there are some, the grant didn't pay for the entire thing, so we are asking our board to approve us using approximately $1,000 from our Abbey Fund.
$1,500.
$1,500, sorry, total there. That would, this is, do you, I'm not familiar with the terms of the grant or anything, but that was a grant that we were eligible for in replacing this, but it didn't pay for the entire--
They don't, they give it every two years, but--
So we have that money right now in our Abbey Fund, that was one thing that we'd like to finish, obviously, with the milk cooler, because that is a necessity at that time. Then in talking with Jason too, in the walk-in cooler in Bathcock, there is a need to do some repair in there, and we were asking to use that money as well. And then out of repair and maintenance of the central building, we are looking at the replacement of one of the double ovens. And those, those monies are all currently in the funds.
All of them were clearly Abbey Fund.
Yeah, that's what--
Yeah, I, I don't know why it says repair and maintenance, there's enough money--
There's money in there for that, yeah. So basically, it was, and somebody, I think Chrissy had done this, so the repair and maintenance, it's not the repair and maintenance, but it's really that money that is coming out of the Abbey Fund to support the upgrade of--
The Abbey Fund, I need to clarify.
Yep, I'm sorry, yep.
Because the program belongs to the school. We just contact for services, all of the money stays in the program.
Right.
It can only be utilized for food service or nutrition-related activities.
Right.
So that fund, it's, it's got other, it's got money coming into it besides what kids pay for lunch?
No, it's all program-related.
So it's all revenue, so it's not grants or anything that are given to us by USDA?
No, it's written from the program.
Okay. And we charge, when we talk about what we're going to charge, what we're charging is enough to cover all that, including ovens and--
Yes, but it also has a lot to do with the reimbursement rate from the state and federal government, food participation, if we reduce price hot lunch rate, there's a lot of other things that go into that as well.
So there's other variables, basically, just you charge this, and we have this, and that's what we spend our money on.
At the end of last year, I believe, we haven't gotten a finalized audit yet, but the program had about $30,000 of surplus, but we do know that this year, due to changes in free reduced-price hot lunch, that, and we're offering full free breakfast to everyone, which is expensive.
Quite important.
But, yes, but there is cost to that, of course, that we probably won't, won't do quite as well this year, but still, we're still okay.
I, I think the Abbey Group is very appreciative that we take responsibility and take care of these things as they need to be upgraded. So these are the things that have come to the top right now, that we would like to proceed with in taking care of those things.
It's prudent. Do we need a motion?
We should have a motion for that. We always try to bring the things that are related to the food service program to the board.
I thought so, but-- On our desk. So I would move that to be authorized to purchase these items with money from the food service fund.
I'll second it.
Did Toby second it? Any discussion?
Do we not need an amount? Does it matter?
I don't know if we know all the amounts.
I would say not to exceed 5,000, you'll be fine. It's only about a little over four or so, if you're comfortable with that.
All right, that's fine.
Let's go, okay with me too, I'll just second it.
Okay, not to, not to exceed 5,000. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, it passed unanimously, thank you.
Laura, sometime maybe in the next couple months, just let us know where we're at with that, what the balance is.
Beautiful, thank you.
And then just the last thing tied into our report is, Jason is planning to do some interior, I think, maintenance within both buildings, and hoping to do that even over February vacation. In the central building, we have our planning room, which is where our kids go to process when they are having a tough time within their classrooms. It's a fairly big room, there's a positive side where some of our kids come in and have breaks, and there's a side where they might need some cooling down time. So within that space, Jason and I had looked at dividing that and creating another entrance from the hallway, for the sole purpose of putting our copiers in there for a couple of different reasons. One is, the copiers can no longer be in the hallways according to the fire marshal, because of any electric. It, a couple of years ago, they were right there in those nook areas, and they had been there for years and years and years. Remember, yeah, for years and years, and it was a convenient and good location for them. When we found out we could no longer keep them there, they were moved inside to the office. Sometimes there are, there's lots of activity within the office, that sometimes makes it[1721.91] that sometimes makes it hard when there are parents coming and going. Our offices are busy places in schools, they really are. The other piece of that is we tried to move them over here into the library office. However, sometimes when there were paper jams, Mary Ellis is, is the queen of fixing the copiers and she would have to leave the desk to do that. The other piece of equipment we need to really move is our laminator, which is quite an expensive piece of equipment. Right now, the only location we have for that is outside, um, Jason's office and kind of near the workshop area. So, a couple of things. It gets very dusty and messy down there. There are some times when that gets left on by mistake. We work as hard as we can to get that to be shut off. But when it's kind of out of sight, out of mind, that happens. So, the reason or the rationale behind this adjustment is to put those machines in there, have a little workroom. As you know, we don't really have a workroom and we also don't have a, a teacher's lounge or a staff area. But this would, it would hold those three machines. Teachers would have access at any time they needed. Um, Mary would be close by. It would not impact the space, except only in a small way, but it wouldn't impact the way we work with kids. So, that was something bringing to the board because it would be something done and adjusted to the building. The second piece of that, in the Babcock building years ago, when we created the planning room over there, we took an extended, we took a, a, a piece of a closet from our, um, gym area, the gym area. And that was a storage closet. We cut some of that off to add to the planning room as what we call our safe space in order to allow some kids that calming down time that they might need. Right now, we are feeling that that is not an adequate space. So, one of the things that Jason and Justina did was they looked at creating a bigger space within that current planning room and that that other space would be added back on and extended to the original closet space. So, those are things that Jason feels that he can do himself. Um, one, next door is really about safety. Two, over here, it's really about access and maintenance of our equipment.
Is he going to have to put in a newer doorway?
In this building, yes. So, that's why he would be adjusting things. It would be coming from the hallway, the main hallway, um, into that space. Because it wouldn't be, yeah, it's a good question, Don. They wouldn't be, we wouldn't be using the same door going into the planning room. And I think years ago, we had done that, long time ago, when, when we added space into that current planning room. There was a door added. Um, I think different sections were even, um, it was made smaller to have another space there. I think as we continue to grow, that's our biggest problem right now is, is space for all of these things and, and for people. So, that's one way that we thought we could accommodate that equipment. Next door, it's nice because there is a nice little incove here that holds the mailboxes. It holds the machines, so they can be maintained. They're out of way of kids, um, out of way of, um, people, public just coming and going as well.
I, I guess I would encourage Jason to make sure he checks the fire codes.
Yep, sure.
Because if you're putting that into another space. There was a school in the last thirty years that had a laminator somebody left on and burned them out of the school.
Yeah, and I would hate for that to happen, so, yeah.
But, uh, you know, just as long as he doesn't do something, well, we might have to get an electrician in and might have to pick him, make sure that has the proper.
And do that, yeah. He does a lot of that work himself, but I will definitely pass that on because he is usually very up to speed on those fire codes.
If he does it, he needs to have it checked by licensed electrician.
Sure.
I think he is.
He is.
Is he licensed?
He's a licensed electrician.
That's, that's why he does, I mean, instead of hiring out, well, we have things that need to be done here. Instead of having to hire someone to come in and do it, it's, it's great that he has that knowledge.
That's really great. You know how hard it is to find a licensed electrician?
Yes.
And the thing is, you need a licensed master electrician to sign off, even if an electrician does the work.
Oh, I didn't know that.
I mean, I know on, but all of the house had, the person that did the work was an electrician and he'd been an electrician, but he had not received his master's license. So, when the job was done, somebody else had to come in and check it and sign off. That's just what.
In residential housing too?
If it's a multi-unit.
Oh, multi-units, okay.
So, I don't know if we need a formal motion for this, just to move forward on it. But it was more of just an information and to get your feedback too.
That's great.
Thank you.
Makes sense. I've been in there with that. You've got like two people at the copiers and you've got two parents and you have a kid.
And the phones.
Yeah, a kid comes in.
It's, it's just, it's a very busy place.
And moving that laminator too, because that, that does get left on.
Yeah, and it, like I said, I would say, and it's next door, it's right in the library. There's really not, and, and it's secluded, so it's not near the kids, but here, there's not as much space for that. So, having all that equip, I say, equipment together for teachers to be able to do that, it's good. And next, we may be looking at a teacher's lounge, I'm not sure.
Yeah.
That would be a first.
You remember, John, when this, I mean, when the school was first built, all of these inner planning rooms, those were our teacher prep areas. They weren't even called a, a teacher's lounge. It was just our, our teacher prep area, but now we needed those, um, spaces for kids. So, that's why we're supporting kids. So, a long time ago. So, thank you for, for that. And that's really it for the report.
Okay, great. Thank you. And our next agenda item then is our superintendent's report.
So, um, our, the, my newsletter touches on the fact we've already spoken to it a little bit. Um, we had had a plan for an organizational meeting on January twenty-third. That has been canceled. And, uh, a new organizational meeting of the new Unified District, um, has been warned for February twentieth at Mississauga Valley High School in the Dragon Theater, seven o'clock. Um, the, you brought up, um, in a previous meeting, the idea of childcare being available.
Yeah.
The National Honor Society, uh, has agreed to do that. They agreed to do it for the twenty-third. We're gonna talk to them about the twentieth.
Yes.
Uh, obviously, they would like some kind of heads up around, um, numbers of kids and things like that. Um, so we'll be able to put on Facebook, um, you know, who to contact about that.
I hope that helps.
I think, you know, it's important to get families there.
Yeah.
Um, it's why we do it, seven o'clock, so people can get home and, and feed their kids quickly and, and make arrangements. Um, because we want to get as many people as possible from all three communities at that meeting to participate in.
And if I can make a plug in terms of the decisions that we made there? The decisions that we made in terms of, uh, how we vote on budgets in the future? In terms of how we elect, right? In terms of how we elect representatives, whether it's by town meeting style or whether it's Australian ballot. And then also another one that I hadn't even thought of until recently is also how do we do our reports? Do we print them out and mail them to everyone? Or do we have them in certain places and people know where to get them? So, those are all really important, I think, in terms of, of people in Swanton. I think they should know and know.
Julie, how are we getting word out? I know through Facebook, the newspaper, but what are some of the?
There will be, um, the messenger, um, spoke to me today, not only about budgets, but I, I spoke with Michelle Monroe a while ago and, and she discussed that before we have an organizational meeting, I'll contact her and, and they'll likely do a piece about it. Part of the challenge, uh, you know, as you know, or some of you know, I arranged to go to Swanton Select Board and then it was, the meeting had to be rescheduled because of the, uh, agreement with the Attorney General's Office and the parties in that litigation. So, I still went and told them, the information is evolving every day. So, part, part of the concern about, um, informing people too quickly is that, um, there are a number of things going on right now. There is a status hearing being requested, a new judges being, new judge being appointed. Um, so, the litigation has impacts on, um, these timelines. And of course, we need to move forward, um, because we're under order to do that unless a judge tells us to do something differently. But, um, we will, uh, make sure that they're letting everybody know about the importance of this meeting.
We can use aside boards to.
We absolutely, the, the Swanton Select Board suggested that. They want to, uh, put things on their websites as well.
Would the Wednesday Weekly, could something go home in that? Just to let them know about?
When it gets closer.
When it gets closer, we absolutely do. And somebody was telling me today, I think it was Laura, that, um, doing a Facebook event rather than a post allows people to put things directly in their calendar.
Yeah, somebody had asked that on the, the parents of Swanton kids. They had posted, I think, last week about the twenty-third and I commented like this just got canceled as of last night. And they, I, I wish I could recall her name, but somebody had suggested that as well, which is a great idea.
So, there's that. Um, the legislative session has opened and, uh, a lot is going on already. Um, there was a, uh, I don't know if it was a rally or hearings, um, about Act forty-six. That happened yesterday. Um, tomorrow, I'm going to be spending the day in Berlin with, uh, all superintendents. Um, we'll be meeting with Secretary Dan French. Um, we'll be meeting with Tim Ash and, uh, Metsy Johnson and discussing the upcoming legislative session and, um, the slate of education, uh, legislation that, and priorities that will likely be coming up. Uh, and then, of course, the superintendents will discuss those themselves and discuss their own priorities. Um, so that, I think, will be an important meeting. I wanted to, uh, just do a shout out on a change of subject here to Tammy Hayes and the Special Ed, um, Department in our Supervisory Union. They, uh, received feedback, as they do every year, on, um, how well students, uh, rather, how well staff is doing in complying with, um, completing individual education plans and three-year evaluations for kids eligible for special education. And of course, the goal is a hundred percent. We're told we have to be a hundred percent compliant all the time. And, uh, you know, that's, that, that's a very difficult bar to reach. And, um, it just speaks to the level of, uh, training and professionalism of, of the special educators and speech and language pathologists, uh, that we have here. That they actually had a hundred percent compliance when it came to special ed, uh, three-year evaluations. And ninety-eight percent compliance for I P's. And they're just so dutiful. And I know that just seems like paperwork being done on time, but if you have people that are on top of developing good plans, it means that they are being thoughtful and organized and ensuring their kids are protected. So, it's, it really is, uh, emblematic of how well the program's run generally. So, I, I just, I've never seen a hundred percent compliance in twenty-something years, so I was very impressed.
Yeah.
I'm a former special ed director.
As a former fellow. I mean, I got ninety-nine percent once and I was feeling pretty good about myself, but a hundred percent's a big deal.
And they do work really, really hard, take it serious.
They've done some good stuff recently.
They surely do. And so, I don't know if you have any other questions. There were curriculum updates about the activities that have been happening, um, in December. The work that literacy and math coaches did, um, the, the PLP work that was done, this joint meeting of superintendents, curriculum directors and special ed directors that happened also in December. So, um, it's a lot of good work happening and I really commend COSHA and the coaches and the interventionists and all the work that just, is just constantly happening to make sure that, um, students have really excellent educational programming here.
That's great. Thank you. Our next topic, you know what I'm wondering is because we foresee some, some, you know, issues with old business taking a little longer, should we switch new business first and then we can let people go if they want to go?
Absolutely.
So, they don't stick around here then, you know?
I'm sure before we move there, I want to go back. On Jason's projects, he has the money in the budget and so he has the money.
It's not anything extra. Yep.
So, basically what we're really approving or nodding is to a reallocation of, of, you'd like, a re, not reallocation, reuse of, a different use of those funds than originally planned?
Well, it's really, most of that is going to be coming out of his repair and maintenance, which we call maintaining within the building. So, it's not a, it's a capital project. And so, the money is there within that, for sure.
It's a good question, though. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. And so, Gina, did you want to do the update on this?
Yep, and I actually, yeah, that was the only new business. Today, we sent something home with our students. I met with the Swanton Police Department the other day and they had just met with the Town Select Board because, um, the apparently members of the Select Board had received some calls about, um, cars passing buses when they are stopped letting kids off and, uh, with their stop signs on. Um, and it's been happening, it didn't sound like it was happening a lot in the village, but on some of our other routes. So, they had had a meeting with Swanton PD and are taking it very seriously. So, there is, um, an older gentleman who is a member of the police force. So, he is going to be riding some buses randomly. Um, um, he's been on one already and he's not even in police clothes. He has his little yellow vest on. He looks like a lovely grandfather. So, I talked to the kids on that bus because when someone new is on the bus. Um, and then the police said that they were going to be on the roads near our buses, either in a police marked car or unmarked. They were really talking about a zero tolerance policy that if someone were to do that, it's against the law. And, um, they were really working closely at, at the request of the Select Board. So, they came to meet with us about that and just said, we want you to know this. And I wanted to let our families know. Some kids go home and are talking about that. That's, so, I felt really good about that, that people were taking action of things like that because the fact that people would do that is a little infuriating.
And, yeah, this is like unfathomable.
Right.
It is zero phone, basically.
In another, in another state.
It has to be zero phone.
Yeah, yes. And he was, when he was telling me this, he said, you know, and so I just, we wanted to get that word out to families who they knew and to talk to their kids about it.
I'm glad that they responded so, so quickly and so thoroughly.
And just with, along the bus conversation, we, um, we've been trying for a while. Julie's been working with us to, um, hire bus monitors, um, and because it's hard to drive a bus and to keep our kids safe and kind of calm and under control. So, we have, um, we've gotten lucky to find our first one and she's gonna start on Friday. Um, she's a retired bus driver from Connecticut. Seems like a lovely lady. So, I'm sure her job's gonna be much easier. I don't know if she, if that's true, but, um, but just with the knowledge and the experience. And, and she's lovely. She's really all about making relationships with kids. So, we introduced her to the kids today and said, you know, she's to help, here to help you keep safe on the bus and if some of you need help remembering the bus expectations, she'll help you. And, um, so, we're looking forward to that. So, we're trying to encourage more people who might be interested because it is, it's a challenging job, but, um, if it helps to keep our kids safe, once again, that's what we're looking at. We're excited to find others.
Yeah, thank you.
Especially since our buses are K to twelve, like that. I know.
Yes.
You know, I, I'm still hesitant putting my second grader on the bus, knowing that they're high school kids there.
They get such a good vocabulary though.
Don't they? So, that is nice. That is an extra sort of.
You know, it's not the high school, that's usually, it's a junior high.
You're right.
We talked a lot about how that might look differently because there are other organizations that run two separate bus routes, so that those kids are not together. Obviously, that's a, a financial burden. But, those are things that I'm always open to explore. We've started some of those mini conversations, especially as we look to come together, but.
Right.
I thought there was some routes that were just high school.
Very few. Like, there's, there's one, there might only be one or two and that's because they run double routes. They'll do the run up to the high school. There's two buses here now, I think, in the morning that drop our kids first and then they'll pick up kids here and they take them up. There's one, um, who is just in the village and I don't think there's any high school kids on that. It's all about where they're going and timing and.
Well, this is good. Okay, this is a great start.
Yeah, it is. Thank you.
Thank you. And then now we're ready to move on to touch on the old business Act forty-six updates. We can do some here to hear people.
Can we talk about, you see, and we still have the public here?
Yes.
Uh, are we gonna change our school board meeting on the sixth?
Oh, good thinking.
I think it'd just be important that if we do that, the public, since we're not town meeting, I probably noticed that maybe we aren't gonna be here on the sixth.
Oh, good point.
Are we gonna be here on the sixth or?
Or March six?
Yeah.
Or there's that possible conflict.
See, that's, that's, according to this, that's our next meeting.
You're right, any possible conflict. So, we should change it. Oh, but wait, are we meeting in March at Franklin Northwest?
Yes, February sixth.
We will continue to meet. So, it is February sixth, so we do need to change this.
No, March sixth.
No, it's not March sixth for the Swanton.
The Swanton Board is scheduled for the sixth, as is the SU Board.
Well, that's February sixth.
Oh, then why does it say possible conflict?
But, uh, March, probably both.
Yeah, it is the same conflict in March.
I wrote it. You'd think I didn't remember.
Is there no meeting in February? Is there no meeting in February?
So, we're gonna have to change that March sixth, March sixth. What, what do you all want to change it to?
So, I'm, uh, I'm still figuring it out. I, am I, am I done?
No.
No.
You're not done until July.
Yeah.
June thirtieth. But after town meeting, there will be a vacancy for those.
June thirtieth. But after town meeting, there will be a vacancy for those seats that are, that were up on town meeting day. And we didn't hold an election for them. So.
So you're stuck, same.
The, the rest of the board will appoint people to those vacancies. They don't have to appoint.
I can't imagine why wouldn't we, you know?
Julie, do you know, can I add, and maybe, I shouldn't ask because I'm not on the board, how much business will be done by the Swanton Board after the new board is elected? So will there be monthly?
There'll be warrants.
Board meetings with our new, newly merged board? And then monthly meetings with just our Swanton Board, and then those will end in June?
July, June.
So, yes, the board chair, you know, once we get going, the board chair will work with administration and the rest of the board and see what amount of business there is. You already don't just meet, meet weekly, monthly.
Right.
So obviously, warrants will continue to, need to be approved. Any?
Staff?
Any, if there was a professional teacher that needed to be hired, I mean, because I, I hire support staff and long-term subs, so there could, there could definitely be business. That does not mean that this board is going to stop being interested in what's happening in the school and want updates on the playground and updates on happenings at school and any presentations that might take place. But some, I do know that in some instances, because typically when you've got a transition board meeting and you've got local boards meeting too, sometimes boards will say, I'm not sure if we have business this month. Let's have a special meeting and, and hold it out. But Swanton already doesn't meet every month, so you'll likely be, I think you only have a few more meetings. You have the March.
Because if there are recesses.
So if we have March sixth, you all, when do you want to reschedule that for? Do you want it for the following week? Or two weeks from then, or what do you want?
Julie, what do you have the next night?
What's that?
The seventh, let's see. Not a thing. So you can do Thursday, the seventh.
What about the seventh, everybody?
The seventh, no, March, that worked.
Does that work for everybody?
So I'm not going to opine because I, some, you know, I could piss everyone off, I'm very capable of doing that in two weeks or two months, so, because I won't know if you're selecting me until after town meeting day.
We will, if that makes you sleep better, we can vote tonight.
Yeah, yeah, that's true.
Or sleep worse.
I think that's a good idea.
I'm sure that the board has the intention of filling the vacancy when it occurs.
So you're looking at March seventh now?
Yes.
And actually, it's not even, it's, we're asking you to stay on and we'll approve it until June thirtieth, is what we're really doing.
Kind of begging you to stay on.
Right, we're not really appointing you so much as asking you, right?
Right, well.
And he's the only one up this time?
Megan too, so Megan will be there with you.
Definitely Megan.
I'm not up though.
No, I said inferior.
Oh, inferior, I was saying Terry. Okay.
Thanks for taking care of that.
Okay, so we're doing March seventh?
Yes. March seventh.
Six P M. or seven?
Six.
Six.
Okay, and I won't be here, but if you need me for anything, I can be reached by phone.
Well, is there another board that you would be?
Did we say seven or six?
Not till this one yet.
Six.
Six on the Sunday.
Six o'clock.
Yeah, that's good, thank you. I trust you all to do a fantastic job. And if you do need some.
Megan, the vice chair.
Oh, do we have a, who is the vice chair? Is that you, Megan?
I think Megan is.
I think you are, yeah, so you're up.
I think you are.
Yes. Yes, you are.
I don't think that's true.
Yes, you are. Yes, you are.
I thought you were doing it with, with Patty Jo and it never actually like changed.
No, you, we did you.
Oh, good, okay.
That's going to be interesting because she's the vice chair, she can't call a meeting to order because she's not a board member at that time.
Oh, my goodness.
So then it depals to the clerk, so it'll be the clerk.
That'll be you.
It's okay.
It's so funny, but you're going to, that'll happen first and then you'll have to facilitate the meeting.
We'll organize and I'll open the meeting and I'll ask, you know.
It'll be much, it'll be great.
It's funny.
We'll start by organizing the meeting and then appointing to the vacancies.
And then, um.
This is you and I, John and Dawn, you two, if you want to continue.
Yeah, you need to show up. Bring your kids, bring your kids. I can always call too.
I think you better be calling to John and Dawn, you two, if you want to continue.
Yes, there you go.
Hope you don't want.
Okay, thank you. So if you need a quorum or anything, just call. Well, you're already going to have one if something comes up. Okay, so we did that. Thank you for bringing that up. Is there anything else on the other meetings that we need to discuss? Are we good? I think we're good.
We're pretty good.
Okay. And then, I think just in terms of Act forty-six update, did you want to give us one as the superintendent on that?
Absolutely. We have an amendment committee that was formed last Thursday on the tenth. This board had a special meeting and appointed Megan and John and Terry as Swanton representatives to that committee. Because it is an amendment committee under Act forty-nine, MBU also had the opportunity to appoint folks. So Dawn is on the amendment committee as a Swanton representative from MBU. And that committee met for the first time on Monday night and looked at the default articles of agreement. And some community suggested and other ideas about writing our own and amending those draft articles. A lot of good work happened. There are some areas of disagreement where people will work through. The direction from the State Board of Education through the Agency of Ed is that we, this amendment committee will be in existence until February twenty-eighth. Previously, before that agreement to delay organizational meeting, we would have had time for the transition board to organize and then warn a meeting on these amended articles before that February twenty-eighth deadline. And we don't have that ability now because only the transition board can warn that meeting. So there is a process that we can go ahead and have a vote, that transition board can warn it. And we are still going to have to work with attorneys on how that happens because there, there's, we'll talk about it further, but in terms of legal advice, but absolutely, we can bring that to the voters. And the next meeting is scheduled for the twenty-third of January. And so I've already drafted, done a first draft based on our meeting on Monday.
Wow.
And we'll be sending that to attorneys for questions in the next meeting.
And if anyone wants to show up for that meeting, they are more than welcome. MBU, seven o'clock.
Six thirty.
Oh, six thirty.
Six thirty.
Six thirty.
Madam Chair.
Yes, you're right, six thirty, thank you.
Terry is the chair of that committee.
Yes, yes, it's a real, thank you. Okay, so I would, I would suggest that we have exec, move to executive session. If someone could make that motion based on confidential legal advice and a couple of questions I have that could put the board at substantial risk if advanced knowledge is shared. Did I say that right, prematurely?
Premature public knowledge.
Premature public knowledge.
All right, I'll move ahead.
Thank you, Dawn. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, and John seconded. We don't need to have any discussion, further discussion, do we?
Do we need to invite anybody in?
Oh.
We need to invite Julie in.
Julie, yes, thank you. Anyone else, sir?
I, I guess I would ask that we ask Dina and Justina just to maybe spend the first few minutes with us so they can just get a little idea, not into the in-depth knowledge, but, you know, if I was a building administrator right now in Franklin Northwest, I'd feel a little uneasy.
That's good.
So maybe they're spinning. No, you don't? Okay, okay.
Just to leave a lot of it.
Okay.
And you can leave whenever you want. Now I am.
I think, you know, I, I think if you stay for a few minutes, maybe you just, you can go over your.
Well, the legal.
And then ask you to leave, but I think that if you want to go now and nobody's keeping you, but, I know, if I was a principal, I'd kind of like to get some idea of what's happening to my school, by other people.
And, and we're going in for legal though, and so, yeah, okay. Okay, any, okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, so we're moving to executive session.
Thank you.